Angie telling them we're ready to go. Okay, we are on live at the moment, so I'll call tonight's meeting to order. This is the regularly scheduled council meeting for the month of June. Today's Monday, June 12th, 2023, until after 6:30. We've got a lot of items on the agenda. What do we have tonight? Twenty-four, so we've got work to do. We'll start off with the pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, got a couple of folks signed up here. The first one is David, is that Hoddle? Yes, sir. So, Mr. Hoddle, if you'll just take the microphone there and tell us your name in case I just butchered the last name and tell us where you live and then you're free to speak for a few minutes.
Yes, sir. My name is David Hoddle. I work at Ace Hardware here in McGregor. I live on South Jackson Street, 1023. I got this in the mail, so I figured what a better way to get to know the city council and everybody. So come be at one of the meetings for once.
Yeah, good.
I don't really know what the rezoning is. I was reading about that. Van Buren's behind my house, so I'm interested to see what that entails.
Okay, so you probably live within 200 feet of an area that is potential for rezoning. And so tonight we'll discuss that as part of the public hearing, I would imagine. And you're certainly welcome to weigh in during that time, but you know, glad you showed up.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thanks for being here. Okay. And number two, Robbie Joe Allison.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you. A lot of times we hear negative things, you know, whenever things impact us negatively. But most of the time you don't get a thank you when something positive happens. And last night, the Rett Revolution had a big night because y'all allowed us to close the streets down and on Sixth Street, and it was just a very joyful night. And so I wanted to say thank you because it was a big impact on this community. And it was a lot of fun, a lot of kids, big, little, all the way up, a lot of fun kids. And special thanks to the police department for being there and keeping us safe. And the volunteer fire department, man, they were a hit. So it was just a great night, so thank y'all.
Different kind of splash pad.
Yes, it was. Yes, it was.
Yeah, thanks to you all for providing something like that for our kids to do on a hot summer night. That's great. So really thankful for y'all and all y'all's efforts in pulling that off. Yeah, really great.
I mean, it was a great town effort, so thank you.
That's how it's supposed to work.
Okay, y'all have a great meeting. I'm gonna go.
All right, we'll weigh into the agenda at this time. So the city secretary under item one to administer the statements and oaths of office to newly elected officials. These documents be held on file with the city secretary. Angela? Are you gonna do this instead of me butchering this for the twenty-fourth time?
Yeah, I have to do this part, but then you'll be signing those at hand.
Okay, all right.
Yes. One of your eyes. At your right hand, do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully execute the duties of the office of the City of McGregor, of the state of Texas, and will to the best of your ability preserve, protect, defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of this state? So help you God. Congratulations.
All right, and with that, we'll go straight to number two, which is for mayor to sign and present certificates of election to elected officials.
Sign the oaths of office and the statements of office.
All right, and so this is certified, Sherri Lynn Adams was reelected Ward five at large council. Sherri, congratulations. Andrew J. Henderson, senior, for the twenty-something time you are certified as being reelected Ward one councilman. Andrew, congratulations. And lastly, to certify the general election whereby Stephen Deuchman was unopposed and reelected Ward three council. Okay, that takes us to item three, discussion possible action regarding the appointment of mayor pro temp as selected among the members of the council per requirement of the City of McGregor's Home Rule Charter. So the charter requires that we elect a mayor pro temp. We do this every year after the general election. For the longest time, we don't have to do it, but we've done it by tenure. So for the longest time, it was Andrew Henderson. And last year, I believe he deferred and nominated Paul, who has served in that role for a year. And obviously, that's mayor pro temp. That person steps into my place in my absence. So this is open to the council. We can do it any way you want to do it. We can discuss it, someone can make a motion, we can move on it. So it's kind of up to you all how you want to handle it.
I'd like to make a motion that we elect Paul Allison to mayor pro temp.
A second.
There's a motion, a second. What would be to reelect Paul Allison as mayor pro temp? Any other questions or comments with that? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And motion carries. Paul, congratulations, two years in a row.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to item four, under the consent agenda. We have considered approving minutes of council meetings, and it looks like we are, let's see, tabling the minutes from May 15th and the minutes of May 8th.
Just May 15th?
Yes, so we do have May 8th, May 15th. We do not have, it's like Angie was out for a period of time with sickness. So we have those May 8 minutes, not May 15 minutes. So the May 8 minutes were in your packet, hopefully with an opportunity for you to review those. If there are no questions, additions, deletions, then is there a motion to approve the minutes from May 8?
I just would like to make a correct, maybe a correction on four. Where it said, "Public hearing open at seven." Matt, and there's a question mark, if we could just.
Oh, yes.
X out that question mark.
I'm at a four?
Yes.
Oh, that question mark is the actual name of the person. I could not read the handwriting. Yeah.
Okay, so then do we?
If I can get the correct name, and I can probably get that from Brian.
Okay.
But other than that, I mean, I would make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Okay.
With that one correction, then table May 15th.
All right, sounds good. There's a motion to approve May 8th, table May 15th. And a second, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And motion carries. To item five, there's a public hearing regarding application for a special use permit for 416 West Fourth Street. Notice the note and in the packet that this item was tabled by planning and zoning. And it looks like four, I'm excuse me, five and six go together, so Brian, what do we have here?
Good evening, mayor, council. So this item was tabled. We discussed the specific use permit that the bank is requesting to be able to build a building right here. Planning and zoning had a lot of recommendations and decided to table it. I've been in talks with the bank, and they're gonna have their architect do a 3D rendering and give us some more information as to what they're gonna actually put on the outside of the building. But the biggest thing from planning and zoning when it came to this particular item is that the building was, this is essentially like an R-panel building. They already own the building and they're gonna be relocating it here, hopefully. And just wanted it to look nicer. They wanted stone or brick, just to have a better character downtown and just acknowledge that. They've been good partners with the community, but they wanted to really have a good presentation. So with all of those requests from planning and zoning, they decided to table it and let me have more communication with them and we'll re-present it next month.
Well, okay. So obviously, we could jump in here if you wanted, we could actually start approving things, but I don't think that's the right thing to do. I agree with Ryan. I mean, it'd be hard pressed to find a better community partner than our local bank, TFNB. But I do agree, that looks like a, a little bit like a shop from right in the middle of the. Yeah. Is this storage or something?
It's just storage. They only need no water, no wastewater. So it's gonna, I think it's gonna have maybe some extra office supplies and boxes of paper. It's just a distribution.
The problem with that is that's such a prominent area in town out there.
They've said that they'll do some stone around the outside, and he said they've got some, some places at some of their other branches where they don't have water specifically. So they have like a remote irrigation system, that they have bladders and they can fill up something and put some potted plants around it and make it kind of have a better presentation, so.
What we're gonna do for Founder's Day?
Yeah, that was one of the things, too.
Okay, so if we table five, then obviously six goes with it. And I don't know that we need to take some affirmative action to table it. We can just pass it. Is everybody okay with that? Can we just pass five and six goes with it? There's nothing to do on six if we simply pass five. So we'll skip those items. Thanks for the information there. We'll pass five and six and go straight to seven, which is to hold a public hearing regarding application for a replat of 1,000 South Van Buren Avenue.
So this property is in a R 7.2 or 7,200 square foot zoning. There is an existing, there is an existing. There is an existing home on the corner here. This is the address that we're talking about. They do own all the way back to here. Zoning calls for 60-foot wide by 100-deep lots. And the replat would make the existing lot 100-foot wide and 87-feet deep. And then, of course, the other one be squared off. So it would be 87-wide and 100-deep, so.
Who am confused? Where are they splitting this lot?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, let me move to this one. So they're moving to here. So this is, the whole lot is this red area, but they want to split it down the middle and they want to build a single-family home back here.
So how big do the lots end up being?
Both lots will be 8,700.
8,700 square feet?
Yes, sir.
And where does that fit within our zoning when we talk about R1?
These are, well, these are 7,200. This is zone 7,200, so they're bigger than be required.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there any setback issue for the existing building or the fourth lot?
No, they'll have plenty of room here. This one's already established, but they'll have plenty of, we changed it to five-foot instead of percentage, the ordinance two years ago. So the side setback for this house is five-foot, and they'll have plenty of room here. He's, he's provided a floor plan that fits in that space with the amount of room.
All right, now will you flip back to that other picture so we can see?
Yeah, this one. Yeah, so the property line runs right here. So it's a pretty good-sized lot. It should be like right here.
Then I guess the entrance will be off 10th Street.
Yes, that one will be addressed off 10th Street. This one will remain addressed off of Van Buren. And he has water and wastewater that both run down the street here in front of it.
Okay, anything else for open the public hearing?
That's it.
All right, great. So with that, under item seven, it is 6:50, and the public hearing is open regarding this matter. Open to the public, anybody want to comment? Mr. Hoddle, is this where you live in the area you were concerned about?
Well. I do live in this area, diagonal across, if there's any way to pull it up. But it really doesn't affect me. I was just wondering what it was concerning because it was a little bit vague in what was sent to me. So that's why I came, just to meet everybody and, you know, see, see what it entailed, so.
Well, nice to meet you.
Yes, sir, all of you as well.
Yeah, so this happens quite often where you've got someone with a big old lot like that and somebody obviously wants to, as tonight, cut it in half and put another house in there. And with the lot complying with zoning ordinance, they're certainly entitled to make that request. And so it's gone in front of the P and Z, and now it's in front of the council. I guess P and Z approved it?
They recommended for approval.
Anybody else under item seven? All right, hearing nothing, then at 7:50, or excuse me, 6:53, the public hearing is closed. That takes us to item eight, which is discussion possible action regarding the application for a replat of 1,000 South Van Buren Avenue.
I'll make a motion that we approve the application for replat of 1,000 South Van Buren Avenue.
There's a motion, a second, on item eight. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And motion carries. To item nine, public hearing regarding application for replat of McGregor OT Lot A1C Block 22, Lot B4C for Block 22 in Lily JE, McLennan County Presidential 375910, 137518 and 325453.
So mayor, council, I took this one out this morning after a conversation with the property owner. He's requested a abandonment from us, but we have to contact the adjacent property owner. So we're waiting to hear back from the adjacent property owner in order for this replat to go through. So I took it out. I presented it to planning and zoning, the replat, and there's what's contingent on y'all accepting it and, of course, the abandonment being an issue.
Were we talking about abandonment of street right away or alley?
Uh, street, but it's a, a street that's from, from Old Town McGregor. So it's a street that's never been used. It's sitting there and he wants us to abandon it so that he can purchase it and build a single-family home there. But because P and Z doesn't have anything to do with the abandonment, I presented it to them. Still waiting to hear back on the abandonment. So once we get the abandonment cleared up, we'll present both of them to you. That way y'all have it as one package.
Okay, and that's nine and 10, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it sounds like with nine and 10, there's nothing to do at the moment?
Nothing to do.
All right, we'll pass nine and 10. That takes us to 11. And that is a public hearing regarding ordinance O-08-2023, creating a new R20 single-family residential zoning.
So this is a new zoning that was created. It mimics R10 zoning in a lot of ways, just on a bigger scale. We had some discussions about the lot sizes. We had a developer that has gone through the motions of presenting their entire package to y'all and got ready to start doing work. And then we received some phone calls that that development might be potentially sold to tract home builder. And we felt like that was not in good faith. And so we felt like McGregor needed a larger zoning for those half-acre or so lots that have been presented to us by multiple developers in the past couple of months. So it came up with the R20 zoning. It is a 20,000-square-foot lot size, 2,000-square-foot house. Like I said, it mimics the R10 in a lot of ways, just in the, in how it's structured. And in the use table, it will also share the same permitted use as the R10. It's just a larger size. But that was a, oops, so that was a, just the reasoning behind that.
So the idea is to take R10, which is 10,000 square foot, and turn this into an R20, which is 20,000?
20,000, so we, we haven't rezoned anything or zoned anything R20, but this would be a zoning that we can apply moving forward.
An option.
Yes, sir.
So when you're talking about the location, I'm just trying to think, what would be a location where this might be implemented?
Particularly east of town, where we have some of that agricultural land that's being developed. It seemed like, for me at least, to apply that to the land, kind of give it more of that openness that was already there before. We're getting a lot of developers that are proposing to us half-acre or one-acre lots. And so what we're trying to hedge here is them coming in and saying, "I want to build 50 houses." And then, once they get through the motions of getting their plans approved and everything, then they come back and say, "Oh, now we want to build, you know, 150 houses." So just trying to have it as an extra layer of protection and also keep that openness out there, the aesthetic as you're driving, so.
The subdivision, subdivision that brought it to our attention was actually the one on the north side here. And I guess it was R10, right?
Seven, 7.2, and then some of it, some of it needs to be annexed still as R10, but it's, the what's in the city limits is 7.2.
You're talking about the piece that they have the drainage questions?
Yes, it's the name of that country.
Country Trails.
Country Trails is what they ended up naming it. They have it for sale now currently, or at least they've had several look at it. And it, it's not really an issue in fact because the lots they have are the maximum number of lots we can serve on the north side right now due to infrastructure. That's part of what got it to where it is. But it did, Donald, asked Donald Bryan, said, "Look, what if they did something like that, Cotton Belt Crossing, which is R10?" And that's not what they intend, obviously, but it just came to us that we probably ought to create a larger zoning classification so that that back zoning would not be quite as tempting in the future.
Yeah, I agree, the bigger the better.
You can only push it so far, but this is a good spot to push it to.
Yeah.
Charlie, Charlie drafted most of this after you sent it out, right? You drafted it and sent it to him?
Okay.
But Charlie's not that disciplined.
Yeah.
So some communities that are more rural do have an agricultural zoning, but we don't, we don't have that issue with that right now. Those are more like five-acre and larger tracts that would be set aside. But I think the 4,000, or the four-tenths of an acre about is a decent size, especially with the amount of development I anticipate will be seen between Waco and McGregor. So it makes it buildable, but still larger, so.
What's your side yard setback?
Side yards are, well, this one I proposed a percentage on, by ordinance, it's five-foot. My proposal in the future will be to go back to a percentage-based formula, but right now it's, this one's percentage-based.
All right, so that takes us to the public hearing under item 11. Public hearing regarding item 11 and the matter that was just presented is now open at 7:01. Anybody on the public hearing? Hearing none, and the public hearing is closed. And that takes us to item 12, which is discussion possible action regarding ordinance O-08-2023, ordinance number O08-2023, an ordinance of the City of McGregor, Texas, creating an R20 single-family residential zoning district, amending section 3.1 of the zoning ordinance of the City of McGregor to provide for the R20 zoning classification. Amending article three of the zoning ordinance to renumber each section, beginning with section 3.4, creating a new section 3.4, R20 single-family residential. And amending the permitted use table to provide for R20 single-family residential zoning. Brian, anything else we need to know there?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, well, I think it's a good idea, since we're seeing so much development around here. Give us another avenue. Is there a motion by ordinance number on item 12?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance zero dash, O dash, zero eight dash two zero two thirteen.
Sir, there's a motion, a second, on item 12. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And motion carries. Item 13, hold a public hearing regarding voluntary annexation of Cotton Belt Crossing, residential development being 130.133 acres in the J.B. Dorsey Survey Abstract Number 277, McLennan County, Texas. This tract is part of a call 150-acre tract to Wees Farm LLC, recorded instrument number 2010011224, OPR McLennan County, Texas. And all of that 130.113 acre described in deed to Cotton Belt Crossing LLC of record as instrument number 2022027349 in the official public records of McLennan County. That's MK at 356213. Yeah, go ahead, sir.
So this is, the red is Highway 84, blue is Cotton Belt Parkway. So this is the subdivision that we're referring to as Wildflower Road. So the developer has requested annexation. They designed, they have signed all of their paperwork, voluntary annexation paperwork, and also a development, I'm sorry, not development agreement, service agreement with the city of what we'll provide moving forward. Our city ordinance does dictate that annexations come into the city's owned R10, but the developer has agreed that R20 is good for him. The only issue that we have with this, and it's kind of looking a little bit backwards, is there are lot sizes in here. Next city council meeting, we'll have a presentation from them. Their lot sizes will, will be right at R20 or a little bit bigger, but it's not going to cause any problem with the R20 zoning. They'll all have the square footage for that, but that's what they're requesting. I do, I did have one gentleman, I think he lives right here, did come and speak last time. I feel like it's worth noting, he's concerned about the drainage. He's come a couple of times. I told him I would reach out to Jacob, Jacob and I had a phone conversation. And he crunched the numbers again while I was on the phone. And he said, "In a 100-year." and he said in a one hundred year flood, that that detention pond would fill up in about two hours, but then it would be completely dissipated in about eight to twelve hours, so it's, he's concerned, I think, with the, how long it's going to take to drain out, but worst case scenario, Jacob did the math, it's twelve hours to drain out of there completely, so, like, that gentleman's not here tonight, but I want to voice that, that was a request.
So this is where that new zoning ordinance would, uh, essentially jump right in, huh?
Hmm, yes, sir.
So voluntary annexation, I'm assuming that's all contiguous they touch up somewhere?
We've, we've annexed all of these except for one piece of property right here, um, but all of this is touching right here, this particular landowner has expressed that they're not interested in annexing at this time, but they are touching us here.
And water and sewer provided?
It'll, we'll be giving them water and sewer through, uh, the rail, the old rail bed coming down this direction.
Both water and sewer?
Yes, sir.
When they did the, uh, Wildflower subdivision, we reserved easements between all those lots.
Okay, and that sewer's going to end up all the way?
Should go to Waco.
Oh, to go to Waco?
The sewer, wastewater will go to Waco.
Yeah, they'll have a lift station down in the lower right-hand corner, and then they'll pump it back up to that lane that we joined through, this is the, the park subdivision that goes to Waco.
Okay, good.
That's good.
Yeah.
So that's funny that you.
They've, they've been really good.
Well, it's just, uh, less for us to deal with.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Because we're about capacity doubt, right?
Yes.
We, we should be sending nearly all of our wastewater to Waco if we did what the geography out there tells us.
Yeah, I know.
Topography.
Yeah, we could, that'd be a long way to pump that sewer uphill.
They've been really good neighbors so far, they haven't even, uh, broke ground, but they do want to give the city some land up here to make another city park, as all this develops, we'll have one out here, and then they will express an interest in joining if we can, if we get that text dot grant, again, that trail, they want to participate in trying to help us get their citizens to access to that trail, so they've been.
Also looking at about a hundred acres due west of where they are now?
Uh, allegedly, yeah, I don't know where they're at on that.
We'll see.
Hundred acres due to the west?
Uh, the contiguous property to the west, they've talked to that landowner, but they're nowhere near it yet, I don't think.
Okay, uh, so with that, under item thirteen, the public hearing is open at seven oh seven. Hearing nothing, the public hearing is closed, same time. That takes us to item fourteen, which is discussion possible action regarding voluntary annexation of Cotton Belt Crossing Residential Development, one hundred and thirty point one three three acres in the J.B. Dorsey survey abstract number two seventy-seven, McLennan County, Texas, a tract that's part of a call one hundred and fifty acre to Wees Farm LLC, recorded instrument number two thousand ten zero eleven two twenty-four, OPR McLennan County, Texas, and all of that one hundred and thirty point one three three acre described in deed to Cotton Belt Crossing LLC, of record as of instrument number twenty twenty-two zero two seven three four nine, in the OPR McLennan County, that's MKAD number three five six two one three. And is there a motion, and all you'd have to reference is by item number, an annexation?
I move that we'll, uh, agree to the annexa- annexation of, uh, voluntary annexation of Cotton Belt Crossing, uh, residential development, item fourteen.
That'll cover it. Second, there's a motion, a second on item fourteen, any other questions?
Mayor, we will, we will have to vote on this one again, uh, according to the city attorney, we have to have two presentations.
Okay.
So we'll see it again as well, next month.
Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries to item fifteen, discussion possible action regarding request from Karen Delay Holdings LLC to have penalty and interest waived for twenty twenty-two property taxes for three oh two Laurel Lane, McGregor, Texas.
Uh, we have several of these, you're going to see, you've seen one before, uh, the one before, uh, you delegated to me to visit with the school district, did that, is that this one, or is that one that was? Okay, and the school district informed me at the time that they were going to do the same thing, and did you deny, or have y'all officially denied?
We have not, but our, our plan is to deny.
Yeah, and, uh, that would be my recommendation.
I just think it sure sets a tough precedent to start accepting some, and then when you draw the line of, oh, well, we accepted that one, but we're not going to do this one or that one.
Yeah, your next duty, Sam.
Yeah.
It, it's interesting in that there were other things set up where it could have been waived.
Yeah.
But not everybody went looking for them, and it wasn't well announced, but the point is, don't wait till the last day, the last minute of the last day is too late.
Yeah, it's just such a slippery slope for us starting that.
Anyway, my recommendation is to deny.
Yeah, uh, I think that's the right thing to do, I mean, I, I feel for the folks, I really do, but, uh, and I even understand the excuse, but again, I think to start that is sure putting us in a position to start having to pick and choose and starting to gauge every request we might ever get like this, and I just think that's bad policy. So is there a motion on item fifteen? I move we deny the, uh, request in item fifteen. Second. There's a motion and a second under item fifteen to deny the penalty to wa- or deny the request to waive penalty, any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, that motion carries to item sixteen, which is similar, discussion possible action regarding request from Duggans-Rin Man Romero, behalf of Encore Electric Delivery Company LLC to have penalty and interest waived for twenty twenty-two property taxes for properties within McGregor, Texas.
Same recommendation.
Yeah.
We called, we were trying to ascertain, uh, in case you wanted to know how much this would cost you, not that that's as important as just precedent setting up value of it, but, uh, county, uh, appraisal district basically told Carolyn, yeah, we're, we don't have time to go look all that up.
They didn't provide.
They wouldn't even tell us, huh?
Yeah, they didn't even provide it to them, and they had a large list of.
Yeah, it's a, that's a really big deal. Anyway, again, my recommendation is to deny.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, is there a motion under item sixteen?
I make a motion that we deny the request.
Second. There's a motion and a second under item sixteen, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries to seventeen, discussion possible action regarding request from George Eggers.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
To have penalty and interest waived for twenty twenty-two property taxes for three sixty-five Valley Road, McGregor, Texas.
As you know, if I could help anyone in this town, uh, with a request like this, I would help George Eggers, uh, he is an excellent development partner for this community, but I'm going to use the same, uh, reasoning and the same recommendation for the bill.
Yeah.
I had to list his name.
Yeah. No, and, uh, Kevin's right, I mean, if there's anybody we would want to help, be George, but again, that makes every one of these decisions personal, which is a bad idea. So is there a motion under item seventeen? Move we deny the request in item seventeen? Second. There's a motion, a second on item seventeen regarding denial of the, uh, request to waive penalty interest, any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That takes us to eighteen, discussion possible action regarding approval of the Waco McLennan County Public Health District Cooperative Agreement for the term of October one, twenty twenty-three, to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
This looks bigger than it is, you'll see, there's a lot of signature pages, obviously, there's a lot of members of the district, we are one of them, uh, it also does not change very much, uh, there is some state law changes, uh, that were required, uh, and of course the rate has changed, and we've already adopted the rate structure, uh, the district did, and we began paying a, a higher rate, and it will escalate for the next five years to a level, and it's the same for everybody, uh, all member cities anyway, per capita, the city of Waco honestly was carrying a whole lot of the financial weight of this, uh, ever since it's been set up, and so this is a, a fairer way to do it per capita across the board, and that's what they adopted, uh, but this is your new longer-term contract, the other one's going out, I think, in August, is that right? So, there you go, Charlie has gone through this and verified with me that very little was changed, other than to make it, uh, correct by state law.
And just in general, what kind of services do we get from the health district?
Uh, you get WIC, you get, uh, inspections of restaurants, that's one of the big ones that obviously we're interested in, uh, if we need help, uh, the pool inspection, although we love having them come do the pool inspection every year, uh, and yes, I'm being sarcastic, sorry, uh, the, uh, primarily that's the main things. But if we have a special issue, or we, do we take the, like, rabid test to them as well, or somebody that's represented by them?
We take the, send them to the Humane Society.
Yeah, okay, the animal, the, they're the ones that get the tests provided, though, for the Humane Society, so, things like that.
Okay.
It's well worth the money we put into it, I promise.
Yeah, yeah. No question, it costs us ten times that much, if not more, to do that on our own.
Oh, Lord, yes.
Yeah. Okay, so is there a motion under item eighteen to approve the agreement?
I make a motion to approve item eighteen.
Second. There's a motion, a second under item eighteen to approve the, uh, the agreement with McLennan County Public Health District, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, that motion carries to item nineteen, discussion possible action regarding McGregor Aquatic Center fee schedule.
Normally, this would be a no-no, because it's not budget, however, uh, your advisory board requested, uh, this to be looked at, and, uh, Cassie's going to bring that to you, and I tend to agree with their reasoning.
So the advisory board met on May sixteenth, and, um, we were going over the fee schedules that everything falls within the commute services board, so is parks and recreation, the event center, kind of everything, um, this section that you're looking at right now, their request was made to come to you sooner rather than later, so that maybe we can make the price adjustments effective as of tomorrow morning, instead of next summer. Um, the requests that were made were for children zero to two years old to be free, right now they're two dollars, um, and then to change the age structure just a little bit, um, and then, of course, to come down on the price of the season passes, so, um, the only thing that it affects that's already been paid for and or issued would be the twenty-two season passes that have already been purchased, we would do refunds, um, between the twenty-two passes, a few family memberships, a few individual, it's a total of refunding four hundred and ten dollars.
So what's the overall thinking behind this?
Um, we get a lot of people wondering, uh, like, tiny little kids, like, maybe not actually swimming, um, or that kind of thing that a lot of other places have where, you know, zero to two is free to get in, it's kind of a little bit more of a standard in most places, especially if you were to go to, like, the museums and all kinds of stuff like that, um, so we get a lot of requests for really little kids, of like, hey, I've, you know, I've got four kids, I want to come, and, um, but like, two of them are six months old, and, but am I paying for everybody to get in, and then, uh, we had a lot of requests for the season passes, um, the general consensus of people is that our season pass is a lot more expensive, but when I did the study on all the pools in the area between the Two and Temple, one in Gatesville, the one in Clifton, I went ahead and included Robinson Pool, it's not run by the city, it's, uh, run by their Lions Club, uh, we're actually right in line with everybody for the exception of Gatesville, Gatesville's just more, less expensive than anywhere else.
It does seem cheap, though.
It is super cheap to get into our pool, I mean, it doesn't really cover anything, it's, it's a, it's a fun thing for people to do living in McGregor, it's a nice thing to have, um, but I mean, I think the closest as far as people getting in is an entry fee is Robinson, and theirs is still six dollars, it starts at six dollars.
Uh, just in general, what kind of shape was the pool in this year when we found it up?
Uh, it needed some work, we had some work in the pump house that had to be done, and then unfortunately, right after we opened, uh, just a few days, we found a massive water leak underneath the actual concrete walking pad of the pool, so we shut down for a full twenty-four hours, uh, we ran two parks guys, almost thirteen-hour days to get the concrete cut out, the pipe repaired, finding it, of course, concrete cut out, pipe repaired, concrete filled back in to get the pool open the next morning, because we did, in order to do a lot of that, you have to drain a section of the pool to get down below wherever the pipe runs, and then you have to fill it back up and redo all the chemicals, and so like, it's a process, but we were able to do it with the two guys that came in, and I mean, they did nothing else but that, so unfortunately, we had to to- pull two of our best guys from their other duties to make sure that the pool would get open the next day.
And they did an amazing job in a heck of a timeframe.
Yep.
I was real proud of that, I, I'd looked at my wife and said, they're not going to have that thing open for the rest of this week, Lord, they had it open the next day.
Wow, great. Yeah, that's really great, that we've got really good people doing that, it seems like anytime I ask that question, the answer starts off with, unfortunately.
We do, we spend a lot of money on the pool, and we're open a total of nine weeks every summer, we open the week after graduation, and we close the first weekend of August, and that's for two reasons, our lifeguards are usually either just graduated or freshmen in college, so they're either just now leaving school, and they're, you know, doing all their graduation stuff, or they've got to get back from campus somewhere else to get here, and then, of course, at the end season, they're leaving again to go back to school or that kind of thing, and then our pool manager is usually a teacher, um, and that, the teacher usually has to get out for the summer, and then they have in-service and everything, so we're only open, um, I say nine weeks, because it's nine full weeks, but we, we run those first two days, that first weekend, and then, um, the following Monday, so it's not a full ten weeks, uh, I just call it nine weeks.
But we do have a pool manager for life, isn't that correct?
I may, I might have to have bullied her just a little bit, but yeah, she agreed.
We still fell back to, you must have an adult.
Yes.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
So since opening the splash pad, how has the pool been doing?
The pool's been doing great, um, on average, we usually have, on a Friday, Saturday, busy weekend, three hundred people who come through the pool when the hours that we're open, um, we expanded our hours, so we're open Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, from noon until eight thirty, on Friday and Saturdays, noon until six, we do pool parties on Tuesday mornings and Saturday mornings from nine thirty to eleven thirty, we do pool parties on Friday nights and Saturday nights from six thirty to eight thirty with the option for the extra hour, on Monday mornings, the Academy for Creative Learning comes out from nine thirty to eleven thirty every Monday with their eighty-two children that swim in the pool, on Wednesday mornings, it's the senior center, so if you sign up with the senior center here in McGregor, that, they cover your entry fees for the day, and you get senior-only swim time, so you don't have all the kids running around, and you can do, sometimes they water aerobics and whatnot, on Thursdays, it's Kids Stop, and then on Fridays, it's Little Pub Academy, so we're closed completely on Sunday for Richard to reshock the pool and get it ready for the next week, and then we're closed Monday afternoons, because the lifeguards are required to do training every forty hours worked, so they have to do their swim tests, they have to do their in-service, they have to keep up with all of their, their certifications and whatnot, so we do that on Mondays.
I love it.
Yeah, that's great.
My daughter lives at the pool.
Well, and if we're, uh, if you follow, uh, the pool on Facebook, if there's not a party scheduled, we stay open for general public, so you can, like, tomorrow morning, we don't have a party scheduled, so the pool will open at nine thirty tomorrow morning, so if you want to come and swim in the morning, you can, it'll be open from nine thirty tomorrow morning till eight thirty tomorrow night.
Great job, Cassie.
Yeah, that's really good.
We were, this year, we were very lucky, we were able to hire, uh, twelve total lifeguards plus the pool manager, so we run two shifts, we run nine to three and three to nine.
The rates are, and the rate reflected in red is what the advisory. The rates are, reflected in red is what the advisory board requested.
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, then, under item nineteen, is there a motion to accept the modified pool rates?
I make a motion to accept the aquatic center's fee schedule.
Second. There's a motion, the second under item nineteen, here are the questions. Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion carries.
Thank you.
And there is a typo on received financials as of April 2023.
Okay. So under item... Under item 20, received financials as of April 30, 2023, Carolyn.
All right, Mayor. April represents 58.33% of our fiscal year. And if you'll note that pretty much all of our revenues are at that or greater except for the exchange. And our expenditures are right there as well. So we're still on target with our budget. Our net cash in bank is up 8.97 million. Operating accounts are up 811,000. Pool cash is up 1.45 million. Grants are up 21,005. And capital projects are up 7.08 million. And debt service accounts decreased 401,000. Our general fund net cash flow is 277,000 more than the previous year. Revenue is up 1.02, and expenditures are up 751 as compared to April, up 22. The revenue increase is mainly due to higher sales taxes, 411,000. Ad valorem collections are higher at 100,000, by 100,000, I should say. And higher construction permits of 495,000. The expenditure increase include our capital outlay increases of 212, our community development expenditures of 379.8, of which 292.8 is contracted services, which is mainly plan review, which offsets the higher revenue. You also have higher expenditures for that.
So plan review, by who, what do you mean?
That's Bureau Veritas, our third-party plan review. We've had a lot of major projects, a lot of big plan review fees.
Okay. And that is in conjunction with which, oh, the construction permits?
Yes, sir, you'll see that's up, but so is the review, so they kind of offset one another.
I follow you.
Okay, the exchange net cash flows are down 27,000 as compared to the same period last year. Revenues are down $154. And expenses are up 28,000. Personnel costs are up 22.8, capital costs are down 11, and contracted services are up 21. At the airport, cash flows are down 23,000 as compared to the same period last year, while our revenues are down 1,500, and expenses are up 21,500. You go to the next one. And the next one. That's just everything I just said in numbers. And then you'll see the net change, you'll see operating's the 811, the decrease of 401 in debt service, which represents payments for debt service. Our capital projects is up 7.084. And that's the, mainly the 2023 CO of 7 million. And then grants are up 21,005. And pool cash up 1.4, which for the total of 8.9 million. Our sales tax continues to go off the chart. We're at 1.4 million for fiscal year to date through April as compared to 500,000 10 years ago. So...
And is the sales tax rate still the same?
Yes, yes. I mean, I can't, when, there were months, even in the last, in the last 10 years, where, you know, we'd get 80,000. And the last three months in a row have been over 200,000 each month. So it's, it's, from my perspective, it's just gonna continue to keep going up for a while. Okay, then the next thing you have, the next slide is your second quarter of the fiscal year or first quarter of calendar year investment report. And there you'll see your net changes in all your accounts is 7.1 million. This is as of March 31st. So it's not gonna be the same as what we just looked at because it's difference by, different by one month. So anyway, there's your 7 million difference there. And the other thing that I would like to point out is that we have, I wish I could read it. I believe it's, is it 7525? Or 8020? It's 80, 80% in the pools and 20% at the bank. And you'll also note our interest is considerably higher than it was a year ago.
Interest paid or interest earned?
That's interest earned.
Or interest paid, I would go with that.
Yes, but, but that is interest earned. And if, then I also have in, in your packets, or where you were handed out, is your budget calendar. I just kind of wanted to make sure that, since I hadn't talked with y'all or spoken with y'all, that everybody's on board for those dates.
Yeah, what are the dates that we actually meet? I know, because this is a budget calendar for all the departments and everybody internally as well, so...
Okay, July 31st is an actual meet.
Okay.
Then, public hearing is August 14th. The reading of the ordinance is August 17th. And then we have July 10th, I missed that, that's the, just kind of a workshop. Kind of the early preview of where we're going.
Please remember that due to no fault of our own, we can't vary a whole lot from the schedule. This is about as minimalist as we can get as far as getting it done in a timely manner. And things that are required by the state, your appraisal district are not able to meet. And that's not uncommon across the state now, I've been told, with all the things they have to do. So sometimes we'll be operating with less than ideal information, but we'll be pretty close. Is that a good way to put that, Carolyn?
Yeah.
Is that even fair?
Yeah, that's fair. I mean, I've gotten and had an email that, you know, the 25th is state law, that they're supposed to have our numbers, two certified numbers. Normally, we, I try to meet with y'all, last year we met on the 25th because it was just confirming what I already thought we were gonna have. This year, the note says I won't see them before the 28th.
Just keep pushing back.
So that's why we have the 31st, because I haven't seen anything, I mean, you know, as far as, last year it changed pretty much. So it's like, I want to see that before.
Okay, Carolyn, thanks for the report. Anybody have any questions? All right, thanks a lot. Put those dates in your calendar, counsel, if you would. And I can tell you that already, Kevin, on the 31st, probably gonna be gone. So, by your pro temp?
Yeah, why not?
We'll change the tax rate on his ass.
Can we visit before that meeting?
All right, so item 21, I know we've got some things to discuss.
Yes, sir, all encumbered.
Okay, so close many pursuant to chapter 551 Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in section 551071, legal 072, real estate, 074 personnel in section 087, economic development. Specifically, we're gonna jump down to section 21D, economic development under Texas Government Code 551.087, discussion regarding economic development negotiations, including commercial or financial information received from a business prospect seeking to locate, stay, or expand in or near the city of McGregor to discuss economic development negotiations and/or to deliberate the offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect. So this time at 7:34, we will go into executive session. And then we'll be out to complete items 22, 23, 24, and we come back.
Thank you.
Back in regular session at 8:15. Item 22, Kevin, announcements from the city manager.
I really don't have anything else other than to say the back night was a great success. I've heard about it all day long from all kinds of folks who really enjoyed it. So I suspect the poor people that came up with that bright idea are going to have to figure out how to carry it forward for the next hundred years. It was really good to see the community out. I mean, it was fun. Brian and his wife came over and walked the street. Their four-year-old, as of yesterday, wasn't yesterday his birthday? Okay, well, he wore me out. He led me up and down about three times and then chased me about three times.
Kevin was soaking wet.
Oh, yeah.
In the fire hose.
I took advantage. I had been in my garage working on the bumper of my truck all afternoon. I changed shirts and went down there and took a shower. But really did my heart well to see the turnout and the way. And as I was leaving, I saw Renee driving up on her bicycle, and it looked like she hadn't ridden it in a while.
It was my daughters.
Were you a little unsure on it?
It was my daughters. So it was like real low.
That's all I have, ma'am. Things are going well.
Council, item 23. I keep coming back to one thing, Kevin. What is the plan at some point for Bealy Park?
The plan is to tear the slab out next. Did we get all the fence down?
I think we have the center section that is the only section that hasn't been tore down yet.
Look, I know it's going to take some money, but has there, have we really figured out what we want to do out there?
Right now, I was leaning towards basketball. Right now, I'm leaning towards pickleball setup.
But if you're going to put a court in, I think it ought to do both. Seems like you could double it to do both if you're going to put a hard surface court in.
You can. The problem is that if you do both, it either has to be set up for tennis or it has to be set up for two pickleball. And they crisscross. And so to do that setup, you have to have somebody do it. So you have to know ahead of time what somebody wants to do when they go play. We already have tennis ball court, or tennis courts in town.
Are they back open in the community?
I don't know, but I'm going to work on that. But I like it that we can get them open. I would like to see that expanded. We talked several times about doubling the size of those and setting up a tournament facility there, which could be done very easily. But expensive, obviously.
That's just the one park, and we all know this is just, you know, not, it's just not the same as the rest of them.
I think our pickleball ought to go there.
It's popular. It'd be fun. But so where are the kids playing basketball these days?
Angler.
We need an angler and out of casting.
Yeah, and they're, they both pretty full all the time.
I was going to say, I mean, tennis would still be good because, you know, it came to my attention too that some of the moms were telling me that even our tennis players during school would go to Waco Park.
Yep, that's why I'm going to work on that. There's no reason for those to be closed. They had a little bit of vandalism issue. We can solve that with cameras. But mostly what they had was a lot of damage after that windstorm, and it took them a while to get it fixed back up.
Yeah, it would be nice to have tennis courts open in the public.
I'd like to have two sets of four with bleachers in between and a food trailer area rather than a, you know, never build a concession stand again. Just have a setup for food trailers. You can always change them out. And then have them lit.
Kathy, you got something?
I did get an opportunity to speak to one of the residents who lives across the street at Bealy Park. He's lived there all his life. And he had just a few requests. And the number one was a little bit of off-street parking. Because they have a lot of people who come and play, and he takes his grandkids across the street. And every once in a while with kids, you get a kid who tries to run between two cars, and before you know it, they're in the middle of the street. And he was requesting a little bit of off-street parking.
Had some planned in the middle off of Eighth Street. And with the way we've got those stop signs now, we can probably do that. Just have some headed parking through there.
Just keep us up to date what's, what the thought process through there so we can monitor and have our input, whatever, what happens over there. Just, we've got a good park system. That park's been around for a long time, and it's just not up to par with the rest of them. So I'd like to see us get it there.
Absolutely.
Okay, anybody else? All right. With that, then this meeting's adjourned under item 24 at 8:19.